Maintain. Take off someone. There must have been a windstorm. Twenty logs in the worst section, but they were all cut. They could have cut them a little wider to my liking, but like, at that point, I didn't care if my truck got destroyed. I was just getting out of there.
I didn't do it. No, I didn't do it.
Starts off like a really nice trail of signs, so you assume.
Sure. Yeah, this is, this brush and deep.
Yeah.
Well, all right, everybody. I got seven o'clock. Uh, let's call to order this regular city council meeting for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Counselor one, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Sarah, roll call, please.
Okay, counselor Rittman.
Here.
Counselor Caswell. Counselor one.
Present.
Counselor White.
Sir.
Counselor Wittrin.
Excused.
Counselor Glantz.
Present.
Mayor Lauer.
Here.
Thank you very much. Do we have an agenda update, Mr. Young?
Uh, no, mayor, it is as written tonight.
All right, um, let's go ahead and jump into agenda item number two, public comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comment should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. If anybody on Zoom wishes to make, um, public comment, now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody on Zoom. Anybody in council chambers tonight wish to make public comment?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Adrian Kestner, Troutdale resident. I wanted to just briefly raise what I know everybody knows is not a new issue, but as the school year goes, gets into high gear, I just wanted to raise for attention purposes, the increasingly chaotic traffic patterns around our schools. I know the Troutdale elementary, for example, has been trying to change traffic patterns and educate parents to try to make that area a little more controlled and a little more saying that they can only do so much. Uh, same goes on Cherry Park Road when, uh, the high school is letting out, uh, things just get kind of nuts and in many cases unsafe. So I don't know what can be done as far as partnerships between the city and the county and around the school district, but I do believe that some additional measures than what are currently being done are probably called for.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else wishes to make comment? All right, we'll close public comment. We're going to move on to agenda item number three, consent agenda, three point one minutes, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. There's no discussion. I'll entertain.
I move adoption.
Second. Seconded by Counselor one. All in favor of approving consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Sorry, my camera was off also. I apologize. Okay, passes. Thank you very much. Let's move on to agenda item number four, a report, uh, from East County Resolutions Fiscal Year and Highlights Twenty Twenty-three, uh, Twenty Twenty-two, Twenty Twenty-three, Tara Cleland, East County Resolutions. You have the, uh, you have the attention of council.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for having me. My name is Tara Cleland, she her pronouns, and I'm with East County Resolutions located in city of Gresham, and we serve all of East Moluma County. We have been so grateful to have Troutdale, city of Troutdale support for, uh, well over a decade, for years and years and years. Um, so starting by just showing my appreciation for Troutdale's continued support. Uh, I also want to take a minute to pitch what we do for folks that, uh, you know, maybe haven't seen us around or haven't experienced our services yet. So we provide free voluntary and confidential mediation services to the communities. That means that we help bring people together to help them resolve their issue without giving them any advice, telling them what to do, um, or making them do anything, right? And a lot of people think, well, how the heck does that work if you're not telling people what to do? Uh, well, ninety-plus percent of the cases that are mediated resolve with at least some agreement because when people are in control of their own agreements, they're more likely to follow through with them, right? Even beating out court orders, people are more likely to follow through with mediated agreements because they came up with the agreement, right? So really powerful stuff. We mediate everything from landlord tenant issues, some eviction prevention stuff. Um, we do a foreclosure avoidance program where we're mediating banks and homeowners, helping them, uh, find if they can avoid foreclosure, if they meet the requirements for a foreclosure avoidance measure, keeping people in their homes. We do roommate issues, parenting issues, elder dispute issues, probate issues, anything where folks would be willing to come together to have a more productive conversation, we can help mediate that. Beyond mediating, particularly for smaller towns that we serve where there's maybe not necessarily as many cases, and you'll see that in the fiscal highlights, that there's not as many cases for city of Troutdale as there are for bigger cities like Gresham. Uh, a lot of what we do is training. So all city employees get free, can take any of our trainings for completely free, right? We do a three-day training, a fifteen-hour conflict management training that we hold four to five times a year. That is, I mean, if I don't say so myself, because I'm bragging a little, it's phenomenal, helping people gain the foundational communication skills to effectively navigate conflict. And that's a three-day training totally free for city of Troutdale staff and for folks who are in leadership roles in city of Troutdale. So maybe they're, um, on a homeowners association board or they're working with their neighborhood association. Maybe they're, um, serving the community in some way that they would benefit from these services. We can do everything from give it to them completely free to any level of scholarship that fits their financial need, right? So, um, so I am a big supporter of training. If we can teach more people these skills, then the less mediation that we'll have to do down the road. Uh, so, so I realize they shared a lot of information there. Checking in, what, what questions do you all have?
Any questions from council? Counselor Glantz.
I have a question. Why is the, what is it? The MMMRC, uh, Manufactured in Marina Community Resource Center located in the Oregon Housing? Why are they sending you so much money?
Yeah, good, good question. Good question. So there's kind of two pieces of this because I'd hate to say, uh, they had a lot of extra money and they needed to dish it out, which I love. Uh, and Senate Bill Five Eighty-Six made mediation mandatory for Marina and manufactured community, um, homes because they're unique, right? People own their home, but they don't own the land. So it causes a lot of conflict between owners of the parks and the owners of the homes. So, uh, Senate Bill Five Eighty-Six was passed creating mandatory mediation. So landlords had to mediate with their tenants, also saving on attorney fees, court fees that can be overwhelming for some tenants. And so we get cases for all of East Moluma County for that work. And the Oregon Housing found a ton of extra money and they sent it out to between all fourteen of the community dispute resolution centers that serve all of Oregon. And so we're one of those fourteen.
Okay. And then, uh, one last question. I noticed that, and I suppose it's expected, um, eighteen, the case count dropped quite a bit during COVID. Do you anticipate that coming back to pre-COVID levels?
I, I do. I do anticipate it coming back and it's been a slow road. I think a lot of that is folks, not a lot of people know what mediation is. And I think in our, our culture and our society, people are really litigious. So they're used to calling the city to tell them to make their neighbor do something different or they're calling the police or they're calling an attorney. And so we rely heavily on our, the local governments that we serve for them referring cases to us, for local police referring cases to us and getting the word out that this service exists and can build bridges between neighbors rather than deteriorate and destroy relationships.
And how much does it cost to take the training if you don't need any kind of scholarship?
Uh, so it depends on what training it is. So if it's the three-day training, I think it's two hundred dollars. Um, if it's our basic mediation training, which is a fifty-two hour training to become a trained mediator, that's six hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Not bad.
And that's without scholarship, which almost everyone who takes it gets some kind of a scholarship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, continue.
Okay, okay. So, um, I mean, I think that, I think that brought up more of what I was going to talk about with MMRC. I think the, the other piece of work that we do that not a lot of people know about, um, is we work with child welfare. We actually do this for all of Moluma County, helping reunite, uh, families. So once kiddo's been removed from the home, we'll come and facilitate meetings with parents who are actively trying to get their kiddos back. And so almost half of all of the cases, even though we're doing all of Moluma County, almost half of those are East County families that by having these facilitated meetings with caseworker, with parents, with their support people, with their attorneys, getting them on the same page and then keeping the momentum so they can keep working to getting their kiddos back. Um, that's more of the work that we're doing. And you'll see that in the fiscal year highlights, you'll see like this big service from child welfare. Uh, we get funding for that work as well. So that's why we're doing so much of that work. Okay, finally, we, um, have a program called Second Home that's in partnership with ECU Medical Ministries of Oregon, the Reynolds School District and the Barlow School District. And what we do is the school districts identify students that are in need of housing. Sometimes it's students whose parents have kicked them out for one reason or another, or students who otherwise had a home that was unstable. These are students who don't want to get involved with child welfare. They just want to finish high school. They're sixteen and older or fifteen and pregnant to qualify for the program. These are students who are identified by their counselors and teachers as good students. They just have a crummy living situation. And so when the school identifies those students, we match them with volunteer home providers in the community. Volunteer home providers, they don't, they're not going to act like foster homes, right? You're not just taking any kiddo. You're not just opening your home in that way. Instead, it acts like a landlord-tenant agreement. So as mediators, we come in and we help mediate an agreement between kiddo and the home providers to make sure that they have all of the same expectations, they understand all of the rules, and everybody's on the same page before they move in together. And this is after homeowner and kiddo have already talked on the phone a few times, they've already met each other a few times and made sure that they would be a good match to want to move in together. And so volunteer home provider is supporting this kiddo. There's no rent exchanged, but they do sign a lease agreement. Because in the state of Oregon, when you're sixteen or fifteen and pregnant, you can legally sign your own lease agreement. So we help facilitate that so that kiddos have sustainable housing because a lot of times, these are independent kids that are doing really well. All they need is a place that they can call home every day consistently, that they know they can go home, they have a place to do their homework, and their exchange for rent is helping out around the house and going to school every day and graduating. Right? So that's been an incredible journey watching these kids since we've been doing this program for six years now. We've watched kiddos graduate from the program. We've watched them come back to mentor kiddos who are going through the program. We've watched our home providers grow and take on more kids as the ones that they had graduated. So it's a really rewarding program. And if anybody listening to this thinks I'd like to give back to a student in my community, please, please, please reach out because we're always in need of home providers and there's certainly lots of kiddos, right? And not enough home providers. And it, and you don't have to live in a mansion and you don't have to take on a parent role, right? You just have to have space, access to a bathroom, um, and pass a background check, right? And then interview with kiddos that are interviewing you too, to see if you'd be a good match. And then mediation steps in and helps facilitate that. So if there's any hiccups along the way, we come in and bring everyone together and help them work through those issues. And even if that means it's not a good match and there needs to be different housing, right? The student needs to leave to go to different housing, we help facilitate that. So we make it easier for everyone through that process. Questions so far?
I think we can keep moving.
Okay, well, that's all that I have. I just want to say thank you so much for your continued support and please reach out to us and please refer cases to us so we can keep serving the Troutdale community.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right, have a good night. All right, let's move on to agenda item number five, summer city event summary. Summer city event summary. It just rolled off the tongue. Marley Boxler and Molly Kings.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. We, we really, um, I wanted the council to hear from the two individuals who lead some of the most successful and loved programs we have in the summer, um, in Troutdale to let you know how they went and how it was received because it really does add to our community, the events are going to talk about. So I just want to make sure they give you a good report, one of the freshest in everyone's mind in September. So if you introduced them, Marley and Molly.
Take it away.
All right. Very harsh. No problem. I'll just say, you know, the recreation department is year-round. In fact, I have a couple of extra photos in here, Ray, for a few of the year-round programs that we do before I get to events. Yeah. And so it's really a program that, uh, builds up community. People really want to connect, especially coming out of COVID. You know, there already were issues before people being isolated and now people have really felt that. So these programs, I think, are more important than ever. We can go to the next slide. And I have to give kudos to, um, Kevin, our digital media specialist, because he zipped this together for me, which is fantastic. And, uh, I love it that we have that kind of support here in our city. So these are a few snapshots of some of our year-round programs. You can see yoga, uh, dance, our kids yoga. You go to the next slide, Sarah. And then this is one of our newer ones we tried. Uh, it's like a hiking, walking program. This was very successful. In fact, Chrisanne from planning, she helped me out a little bit with this, which was super fun. Next slide, please. And then here's another one of our newer programs. This was with, uh, Oregon State University's Master Gardener Program, which was great, very successful. Who would have thought two o'clock on a Saturday afternoon would bring in forty people, but there it is. So, uh, incredible, great partnership, their volunteers, they're amazing, uh, great program. And so like the evening hike ones and then this one on weekends, you know, the Parks Master Plan talked about that. And of course, it's true, we know that, you know, programs need to be at all times of the week, not just business hours. So, all right, next slide, please. This is, gives you a snapshot of some of our summer camps. These were some of our sport camps this summer. It's a lot of fun, great weather. Uh, we had chess camp as well, which was actually super cool. Uh, it was games and chess and it was down at the Sam Cox Building. The people were so excited because we had the full, like, technology piece. And so they actually could, like, use the screen and like, it was really super cool because they do a lot of them outside. So that was really neat. We also had Lego camps. It was a lot of fun this summer doing. Okay, this just gives you a little snapshot of some of our, I call them our mini-events. And actually, I'll start with the Little Trout Play Part first. It was always a year-round, well, school year, I say year-round, program. It's for birth to four, birth to five caregivers and their kids. Uh, super fun, really affordable, uh, runs weekly. It's a very common staple in most recreation departments. With COVID, of course, it was gone, kind of the last one to come back. There's lots of germs anyway, so, uh, and it's been run more of like a little mini-event just to see where people are at, if they're ready to go. And of course, they're all in, ready to go. We're going to start it back up at once a month and hopefully move it to weekly. Still trying to figure all that out. And then a couple of other snapshots here. I tried to make a gift program, uh, last winter and that was fantastic, huge, um, success. I'm going to do that again. And then you can see one of our summer, summer arts and craft events that we did, uh, which was really fun and free, and that was great. Okay, moving on to First Friday. This is just the snapshot of the rec departments piece of First Friday, which is the Kid Zone, the Little Trout Kid Zone, which was fun to, the new branding thing has been super fun and so kind of crossing over, you'll see some of that in different places. So this just gives you a little show of, um, the area here next to Mayor's Square. And then the photo on the bottom right, if you go to the next slide, Sarah, that's blown up a little bit more. So this is great. Uh, this is Celtic. You might know her from our visitor's center and she is amazing. And this summer, uh, we had a recreation aide for the first time and she interviewed and got hired for that. And she is wonderful. I can't say enough good. It was so great having a whole second set of hands this summer, um, help with camps, help with events. She's going to be at the dog park grand opening that's coming up. She's going to be at the Winter Wonderland, she's going to be at the, uh, Mary. Anyway, she's all over and, uh, wonderful, wonderful addition to the rec department, um, which is from, uh, next slide. Oh, that's, okay, this, there we go. Kevin put this in, I love this, rec aide extraordinary. Uh, so last but not least, uh, Movies in the Park. And before I get to this, I do want to say we also do Mary movies. I don't have a photo on that, but it's done in December, very popular. We partner with Reynolds School District and run it at the high school. It's been great. We do, uh, refreshments and movies inside. Uh, Kimberly Carl, I work with her in a lot of capacities and she's really one of the ringleaders on that event, which is so great. Um, and it's really fun to work with her as well. So Movies in the Park is really the big, big event that I spearhead with so much help. And this summer was absolutely like, I don't know, I just felt like it all came together and we moved into the ball field. We had like six hundred people for one of the, the movies for the, um, Super Mario Brothers was like the thing. We had a character group there and they had Princess Peach. We had a portable rock wall. So we had like all these kids activities to do as well and then the movie and it just packed out. Um, we probably need a bigger screen. You can see the screen there, the wall, um, to add on so we can see it a little bit better. It was super fun. So the, we had two showings, two nights. We do double features because we have this video wall, so you can see it, um, in the daylight. You get about four hundred and, uh, three hundred on the first night and then six hundred and three hundred on the second night. So super great, expanding that program, um, really was all coming together. So again, lots of people help with all these things. There's park staff and other city staff that help with this. We have volunteers that help as well, and so I'm really grateful for all that. And then I'll just lastly note that one of the things I'm working on right now is, uh, working to recruit new instructors and not necessarily companies, but just new people in the community that may want to volunteer or, or, you know, there's also paid positions to just teach a new skill, you know, just whatever, I'm always looking for that. So I'm working with Kevin and I talked with Marley about it too, just getting something on our website to, um, have that there. If someone's looking, you know, they can go and find like a little interest form to start the process and, um, reach out to, to people to share wonderful things that they have to share with us. You never know. I did a, uh, conversation, Italian conversation class and it was a volunteer. It was like ten people, like, who knew? All these people wanted to find out, yeah, right? Like, it was like, you know, a few years ago. So you just never know. And that's what's fun about the rec department. It has programs and classes for all ages and, um, it's fun to partner with other groups and, and just do, you know, you never know. So that's what I have. Does anyone have any comments or questions? If you'd love to share with me.
Yeah, well, I'll go ahead. I, we continue to get compliments on that program, so I just wanted to thank you for your hard work on that. Like Rich Allen would always say, we don't know, you know, what, what it actually saves is having that program in the way of troubled kids and misdirected kids, so continue the good work.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions for Molly? Nope, all right.
Thank you.
All right, now I'll move into my portion. Um, I have some handouts for you guys, um, that are sort of covered in my presentation, but I figured this would allow you to like look into some more details on visitation later if you would like. Anyone wants a copy, um, from the audience? I will put them right here. Um, and then if there's anyone online, um, who doesn't have the copy of it, um, I can email it to them as well, just to let me know. Sarah, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the PowerPoint. And thank you, mayor and counselors, for, um, taking time out of the meeting tonight to listen to Molly and I talk about the events. They're, um, definitely a very fun thing to be a part of and, um, we get so much community feedback about how much, um, our community really loves these events. So, um, I'm going to be covering the, um, oh, yeah, present mode. So I'm going to be covering the downtown events that we had this summer. Um, and these are more of our economic development events. So we are doing more, we're doing outside marketing to attract people from other cities and other communities to come to these events and help support our downtown businesses. Um, so, next slide. The one we all know and love is the First Friday Art Walk. Um, so, you know, this event, um, the city has been taking over the management of the summer, um, ones of this event for the past, this will be year three, or this was year three, sorry. This was year three of covering the First Friday Art Walk and, um, it's been a hugely successful event. We couldn't put it on without our amazing park staff, um, in public works crew who helps us do the road closure. And every single event, we get compliments on, um, the way that the event is managed and operated and the road closure and just the general, um, professionalism of the event. Um, so I think that's something really great and the park staff works really hard to help us close those roads so that we can fill it with lots of vendors and, um, people. And, um, it's really exhausting for them because they work their regular eight-hour shifts and then they come and, and do these events. And so we're really appreciative of all their hard work on that. Um, so we can go to the, we've just got a couple more photos. These photos are all from this year, so you can see how packed the event really was. And I'm going to get into some of the visitation data as well. Um, so this year, uh, we, um, we purchased a program, um, through a company called Placer AI, which gives us visitation data and we can pull this data for anywhere in the city for any time of the year, but I specifically pulled some reports for our summer events. Um, and I'm putting them into this presentation and have them obviously for you to review. Um, I pulled reports on each of the First Fridays and on the next, oh, the next, next slide, I guess I should say. Um, this is sort of a summary of the visitation report. So our, um, you can see the twenty-twenty-two data and twenty-twenty-three data. I don't think that I came and did a presentation in twenty-twenty-two, so I figured I'd put that information up there so that you can sort of compare how last year went to this year. And you can see that our visitation in this year's, um, First Friday events surpassed the visitation from twenty-twenty-two. So we have seen an increase. Um, for example, June was seventy-four percent more attended than the June First Friday in twenty-twenty-two. Um, you can also see versus an average Friday during these summer months. So I'm not taking an average Friday of the entire year, I'm taking an average Friday for summer months. And we can see just how And we can see just how, um, great of an impact these events have on our downtown and the potential number of customers that our businesses have, um, right in front of their front doors, um, to attract their businesses. So for June, we saw 93% more people in our downtown versus an average summer Friday. July was 43%, August 58 and September 46. Um, we can also compare that to the previous Friday. So another summer Friday that didn't have an event. Um, June is 177% more attendance in our downtown than the previous Friday. July is 82%, August is 108% and September is 75%. Um, another thing we noticed with our First Friday Art Walks this year was that our average dwell time went up pretty significantly. And that is likely because this year we allowed alcohol at the event. So you could purchase, um, wine, beer or cocktails from either some of our downtown restaurants or, um, some of the breweries that are coming into our downtown in the future. We had away days brewing, selling their beer and Wayfinder beer selling theirs as well. Um, so that was something that kept people in the downtown for longer, um, periods of time and hopefully enjoying themselves and having a real blast. Um, the next event that I'm going to talk about is the Troutdale Arts Festival. Um, this event in the past has been held at Glen Otto Community Park near the Sandy River. And obviously that's a very beautiful venue, but it wasn't providing any, um, uh, monetary benefits to our downtown businesses being located at the park away from all the restaurants and shops. Um, so moving it into the downtown allowed us to provide more business opportunity to those businesses. Um, more customers at their front doors again. And, um, we saw really good visitation results from this event as well. Next slide. So, so on Saturday, June 3rd, we had 3,120 visitors in the downtown and Sunday we had 2,600. Um, versus last year, you can see that the downtown visitation was much greater, especially on that Sunday. Um, where it was 187% greater than the same Sunday of the previous year. Um, versus an average, that should say versus an average Saturday slash Sunday and previous Saturday slash Sunday, not Friday. So you can see that the, um, the amount of people that are in our downtown for the First Friday Art Walk is much greater than the number of people that are normally in our downtown on a Saturday and Sunday. Um, the previous weekend had 75% less people in the downtown over the course of the weekend. So again, this provides really great opportunity for our downtown businesses to be able to capture more visit, um, more, uh, sales and visitors into their storefronts. Um, the Troutdale Cruisin' is an event that the city is not actually involved with. So we didn't, other than us helping with the road closure, we don't, um, we're not involved with the planning process of this event or with the management or operations of the event. Um, the Kiwanis Cruisin', or the Kiwanis Club, uh, operates the Cruisin'. And these photos are actually photos from 2022 and not 2023. Um, I think it was a little bit overcast and so that's why you don't see clouds in the sky for that. Um, but the, as I said, the Kiwanis Club are the ones who operate this event. Um, you can go to the next slide. So one of the things that I wanted to point out for the Cruisin' is, um, we've got the 2022 data and we've got the 2023 data. And just like the Troutdale Arts Festival, it does bring in, um, a lot of people for the event. In the one thing that I really wanted to point out though, is in this hourly visits graph. Um, one of the comments that we heard from some of our restaurants was that the event has the potential to be really good, but because it ends at 2:00 PM, they're not capturing a lot of the, um, foot traffic for dinner. Um, so here you can see that once the event ends, people just depart downtown. Um, and it really drops off. And that's really unfortunate because there's a lot of potential to be able to, um, have those people staying longer in our downtown. And, um, when you look through the reports a little bit more closely, you'll see that there are people coming to the downtown from other states and other communities, um, to come to these events. And so the longer that we can keep them in, enjoying Troutdale, the better. When you compare that map to, or that chart to the next page, this shows the Troutdale Arts Festival Saturday on the top. And you can see how because of the event lasting longer in the day, we have a large number of people in our downtown during dinner. So we have peaks at lunchtime and at dinnertime in visitation compared to the other charts. So it's really a stark difference and you can see how there's so many more, um, potential customers for our restaurants, which I think is something that everyone, um, wants to prioritize with these downtown events. Um, the lower chart is showing you what an average Saturday would look like. So all of the Saturdays over the course of summer, of the summer, this is cumulatively what it looks like in downtown and the visitation patterns. And so, um, I think it's really interesting how different this graph is from the Cruisin' graph. Um, and how it's, it's really showing that there, the visitors aren't staying during again, that dinner period. And also, um, they're going home and doing other like errands. They're not, um, they're not staying and shopping in our downtown. So it's, it's having an impact and then it's, it's completely dropping off. You can go to the next slide. So we had a new event this year called Music at the Market. Um, we heard, uh, feedback from a lot of community members that they would love to have a farmer's market. And we used to have a farmer's market, whatever happened to the farmer's market, all sorts of comments like that. And so we decided to take a stab at a farmer's market. And we also decided to combine it with live music because, um, having the combination of events can draw people there for different reasons. Some people come for the music, some people come for the farmer's market. Um, we also decided to host it on a Tuesday, which is a very, um, strange day. You might think to put an event, but we really wanted to increase the downtown visitation on a day that's not commonly, like the downtown is not commonly visited. Um, so we wanted to help, again, help those restaurants see some more dinner, um, activity on a day that they normally wouldn't see as much activity. Um, we didn't close any roads for this event. We just had it pop up in Mayor's Square. And it was, uh, a successful little event, but we definitely learned a lot of things that, um, if we were to do it again next year, we'll change those things. Um, we had a heatwave impact one of our dates. We also, um, started it at six and so we lost a lot of the potential customers, um, when they were driving home from work or the, um, the people who work in our downtown who would have wanted to attend the event, but didn't want to stick around for an hour while they waited for it to start. Um, so some of those changes, um, we're hoping to make for next year. Um, the next page has some visitation data. So on this one, you can see the first one was really well attended. Um, and then it sort of dropped off and trickled and, you know, we, we got to see the impacts of that. I think that, um, with more, uh, effort into the planning and planning, um, more in advance. Um, having more marketing and bringing up that brand recognition and also having farmers consistently. That was a challenge for us is getting the farmers to come consistently at the farmer's market, um, kind of a crucial element. Um, so we're hoping that next year that can be, um, really successful. And, um, we contracted with Shannon Chisholm, who's here in the audience. And she also is the manager of the Troutdale Arts Festival to put on this event. So, um, she does a number of events in Gresham, including Music Mondays. And it has a lot of experience of booking the music, um, part of this and running tons of events that you've probably all gone to. Um, so that was really helpful in putting on this event and we couldn't have done that without her. And same goes for First Friday. We also hired, um, Shannon to do all the booking and, and sound management for First Friday. So we had a really elevated music experience this year compared to previous years. Got lots of compliments on that as well. Um, so yeah, that's, that's pretty much the, the extent of my presentation. If anyone has any questions.
Do you know what was that, the last August date of that? It said it was down 20% from the previous year. What was that previous year date? Was that just a, that, it seems like it's a high number.
The last Tuesday in August, but there was five Tuesdays in August. So the, the thing about the data is sometimes it's not like, it doesn't fully explain to you why you see discrepancies like that. And so, I mean, part of the reason was it was raining. Um, so less people in town. Um, it's also really close to Labor Day. So if it's, if it's counting it off of the first September or the first Tuesday in September, because that's what correlates in like the 52 weeks, that's the same week of the year. Then that's the day after Labor Day and would make a lot of sense why people wouldn't be downtown. So, um, it's not, you know, it's not a perfect science showing everything exactly as we would like to see it. But it is really helpful data to help us, um, make changes and improvements for the future. And, um, and it's been really helpful for us in understanding just how many people are coming and enjoying these things and is our marketing working? Um, there's so many details that I did not cover in my presentation that are fun to sort of dive into in these reports, looking at demographics. And, um, you know, all like the hours when they're coming, where they're coming from, where are they going to afterwards? Where are they shopping? Where are their favorite places to go? Like where else did they go during the weekend? And so if anyone wants to like do a really deep dive, I'm happy to, at another time, do a very deep dive with you.
Uh, any comments or questions for council? Counselor Lance?
Yeah. How do the traffic counts get determined?
Um, so they're using cell phone ping data and then extrapolating that with their algorithm.
Thank you.
You know, it's kind of awesome and it's kind of scary at the same time.
Yeah. I couldn't tell you any personal details about anyone. They're all anonymous to me. But it does help us in our planning and our understanding. So it, it's one of those double edged swords for sure.
Yeah, no, it's, it's cool to see the data.
When, then how do you get demographics?
Um, the data that is pulled have, they have the demographics, but like there's not a human like person assigned to it. It's just, they know that demographic for that cell phone ping. So they don't get the person's name or address or, you know, whatever, but they have that information. And I don't see any of that. It just tells me, you know, the charts.
Okay, that's creepy.
Any other comments or questions for, um, Marley or Molly?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment that, um, well, I'm, I know this was the summer program, but I'm looking forward to the winter. What do you guys call that one? I forget.
Winder Wonderland, which in retrospect I should have named Windy Wonderland. The pun would have still like came through.
And really.
Mine rebranded because it really bothers me that I thought of that two years later, but, um, but I, yeah, a lot of people say Winder Wonderland. So I'm really thinking I might rebrand that to Windy Wonderland.
My grandkids love that one. So I, I'm usually seeing me at most of the events and, um, you know, I, I love that you guys are learning from each event and trying to make it better. And, um, focused on, you know, how do we get the business? How do we get them back? That sort of thing. Yes, um, cause it is an investment, but I think it's worth, definitely worth doing. And I know we got a great team. So keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you. And you actually just reminded me that the last report in this very large stack of reports that I gave you is actually a summer 2023 downtown visitation report. And I use the same boundaries that I use for the events. So it's not the entirety of downtown, but it is that specific like road closure area of our downtown. And you can see that our visitation in downtown has gone up every year since we've been working on these events. Um, on the, you know, it shows you, it's kind of hard for you guys to see, but you can see the peaks in visitation from all of our, um, events. And then this is also showing you a summary of visitation. Um, so in 2020, we had 2,800 or 286,800 people who visited downtown, which is obviously during COVID. So, you know, take that into perspective. And then you can see it growing every single year since then. And this past year we were at 528, um, 1,400. Um, and that's over the last 12 months. That actually is the full year of visitation and not just those, um, summer months. And so it is really interesting to look at it and see that these, um, events are having a positive impact on our downtown and are helping drive up that visitation and, and more and more people are learning that Troutdale is a really amazing place to come visit.
Absolutely. Uh, yeah, so I'll just second that and just say that Troutdale is an amazing place to come visit. And you both are helping bring that attention and awareness to our community. You've continued to do that. So I appreciate it very much. Um, I've had nothing but positive comments from all kinds of people from all over the region, not just in Troutdale. Um, people from other countries that have came through and said, this is, um, it reminds them of, of home and home festivals and home events. And they weren't really sure if they were going to get that when they came to visit or came to live here now for work. And so they were really excited to get opportunities like this, um, here at their, either their vacation or where they're living at now. So, um, like I said, nothing but positive comments from everybody. Um, I've had family and friends come down and say that their new favorite rest, Seawells here, their new favorite restaurant is down in Troutdale. And so, um, that comes from people that live where there's all kinds of good food. And so now they come out here to eat dinner with their friends and family. So, um, it's pretty awesome. So I'm very appreciative of everything you all do. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Uh, any comments or, uh, from the public? If anybody wants to make public comment, uh, now's the time. I'm gonna have you two just step aside for a second.
Thank you.
We can go ahead and make public comment.
Good evening. My name is Saul Pompeo. I'm the owner of Restaurant de Pompeo. Um, thank you very much for, uh, giving the opportunity to give that feedback. My feedback about this event, that this event is like a business, my business vision of this event. They really do this job, these events perfectly. They do very professional and everything was very nice. I only have two issues about these events and I like a comment, uh, the business of, the business of food and beverage. Really we don't need help to more vendors go to outside. We can handle as many people. If you can see my records, I can fit 5,000 people in Amazon. That means we have enough capacity to serving the, the guest cons. If the city wants to have different booths, we can serve in water outside. What I say, give us the opportunity to make business. We waiting the whole year for the summer, for make money. We need to support my case thirty employees. We need to have the business and when bring vendor for another spot, they help out a little bit. If you, if you imagine when we do those events, we need to increase the amount of employees. That needs cost me $700 more in labor. For recover $700 more in labor, I need to sell 3,000 more. That means if we have more customer outside, we can take care. We are ready for it. Another, uh, comment I want to do, tell you is our business from between 11:00 in the morning to 10:00, 11:00 or middle of the night. When you guys close the, the street, um, we only limit the business for the people walks. If the event closed at seven or eight, they kill us for two or three hours. Two or three hours for a small business is a lot. I can show you, sorry, I don't have time to printer, but I can show you. They already closed the event at eight. All the booths are already closed at eight. Everybody enjoy and go. But we need to keep business. Uh, next year I request the booths stay open until more late, until 10:00. Maybe we can have music at night. Maybe we can dance music. Keep the party because the business needs to keep. We don't have the, the regular customers. That means we need to substitute the regular customers for the tourists. What is this shot at 7:30 or 7? We, we are very short in that three hours. Uh, when I, when I, because I participate in another, um, festivals outside, they don't allow to go early. When we sign the contracts in a festival, you told you, you can't have a booth where you need to stay until that hour. If not, they penalty. That means you can do for the, for the vendors comes, they need to stay until more longer. If not, they see can penalty because I know some booths when they don't have more, many, many customers. Hey, go home. Bye. Thank you. Because I know some booths when they don't have more many, many customers, they go home. Bye. Thank you. But when one would close, the other close and very soon all was closed. That's my two comments I was to say, don't, we don't need more more vendors. We can handle it. We can handle it. We have enough capacity. In the downtown, we have pizzas, we have Japanese food, we have Thai food, we have a bar, I have sandwiches, I have pasta, we have everything. We have ice cream. We can, if you ask I put that aside for ice cream, we can do it. And then another, stay more longer. Thank you very much.
That's so. Appreciate it. Anybody else wishes to make public comment?
Adrian Custer again. The one thing that I would comment is I'm for these downtown events. Kind of as so sort of alluded to is traffic and parking is always a thing. And depending on when the Home Forward Project breaks ground, a significant place where a lot of people park for these downtown events is going to go away. So we need to probably as a city, probably think very, very hard shooter rather than later exactly how we're going to change how we do traffic routing, advertisement and signage to make up for that significant loss in nearby parking capacity. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? All right, can we close public comment? So yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll take those comments and we'll move forward. All right. Let's move on to agenda item number six, a motion extending the service of the Public Safety Working Group. Mr. Ray Young squeaked it in before the 11th hour, which is tomorrow.
Which is tomorrow. Turn into a pumpkin tomorrow. Last fall, the council approved a resolution that created the Public Safety Working Group, which is a group of individuals from the Budget Committee, the Public Safety and Equity Committee and the council to begin the process of suggesting to council what would be needed to begin the evaluation of renewing our contracts for fire and law enforcement services in the 2025 summer. The group was not to make any decisions. It was simply to lay out kind of a roadmap roadmap as to what does the council need to know to evaluate the options that we will have and what information will it need to make those decisions? Initially, we had set September 27th for the working group to die, which is tomorrow, hoping they'd be able to give their report tonight. However, the creation of the working group took a little more time than we anticipated. We had to wait till December for the Budget Committee to have their first meeting, to be able to select their members. And then we had, we were short one council members, you recall, in January, we had to go through the process of selecting Councilor Witten. And sadly, Councilor Witten was actually the representative from the P S A to the Pope, the working group. So we had to wait for the P S A to have their meeting to determine his replacement, which took some time. All that to say, kind of drug along selection, and then we got into summer, which was a hard time to meet. They have met once in August. They're meeting again tomorrow night. I anticipate that their work will be done before the meeting in December. And we would like to ask that the council make a motion, an oral motion to extend the date for the working group to do its work until December 12th, which is the day after December 11th council meeting, so that they can give their report. So that's what we're asking for.
Any comments or questions from council? Council Glance?
Is there any reason we shouldn't just extend it? I don't know till March or April, if we have questions at the budget meeting that or at the December meeting that we might want answers on later, instead of having to come back and extend it? I mean, the worst that happens is they don't meet.
Two comments. One, I always find deadlines useful to focus people on getting to an end and a result. Second of all, that is why it's December 12th that ends, the day after the December 11th council meeting. So council, if somebody, we need to extend it, we can extend it again on December 11th. I hope we don't, but we could always do that on December 11th council meeting.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Counsel Riba.
I move that we amend Resolution 2578, Section 6, to say that the PSWG shall expire on December 12th, 2023. All other provisions to remain the same.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yeah, Counsel White.
You know, I I kind of feel like we're painting ourselves in a corner, similar to Sandy. I think it would be wise to give, it said two of the most important, most expensive things we have. We are going to have that December budget meeting, so I'd like to give that group as much time as they feel they need. I would say to extend it. What's a good way to do that without? Like date certain? Do we have to have a closing date for that?
I'd really hate to suggest indefinitely.
It might be wise to, if I may suggest to aid in your friendly amendment, that it the amend Section 6 to say that the PSWG shall report to council on December 12th to 2023 and shall expire at a date to be set by the council on December 12th.
Okay. That's, I like that. Thank you, Ed.
Counsel Rippa?
I would consider that to be a friendly amendment. I think the meeting's on December 11th. So they shall shall report to council on December 11th, 2023 and the rest of whatever Ed said.
I apologize, Counsel Rippa. I misspoke. It is December 12th is the council meeting. That was my mistake. So it would be December 12th is the council meeting.
Okay.
My bad.
So the P, I would, I would accept as a friendly amendment, the amendment of Resolution 2578, Section 6 to the the PSWG shall report to council on December 12th, 2023 and what the rest of it, Ed? What was it? Shall expire at a date to be set on December 12th, 2023. Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Glance. Any other discussion? Are we good, square? Oh, and then Sarah, just a point of order that Counselor Caswell is here. All right, let's take a roll call.
Counsel Glance?
Yes.
Counsel Rippa?
Yes.
Counsel Caswell? I think you're muted. Counsel Caswell?
Abstain.
Counsel One?
Yeah.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Would that go down as a five one?
Probably go down as a five zero.
Five zero.
With one, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Passes. All right, everybody. Let's move on to agenda item number seven, a public hearing that was first for an ordinance that was first introduced on the 12th of September. Ordinance adopting text amendments to chapters three and six of the Troutdale Development Code. Dakota Meyer and Kara Brennike. Carrie, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I have a short presentation I will pull up.
And I will ask you to prove that.
Hello, Council. My name is Dakota Meyer. I'm the Associate Planner here with the City of Troutdale. I will be presenting the staff report and Planning Commission's recommendation for a proposed text amendment to the industrial zoning district and variance chapters of the Community Development Code under case file 7513. We held the first meeting on September 12th and the second hearing is for ordinance adoption. There are two two primary questions we would like you to consider. One, should a conditional use in light industrial zone, zoned areas now become permitted? And two, should a few more variance requests be bumped to type three review? This is a map representing the light industrial zone. The areas with the boxes and the oval are the areas to be affected by this amendment. The two primary requests, as I had mentioned prior, serve to reorganize the industrial zoning chapter to include a use table and dimensional standards table. This will, this change will make the organizational organizational structure used in all our zoning chapters match and make the development code more user friendly. The second request is to amend Chapter 6 Variances. The request was made by Planning Commission to adjust the upper threshold of variance criteria. A brief overview of the amendments. The sections that will be affected are Section 3.02, the need for renumbering of the zoning district outline. Section 3.410 to 3.413, move the general purpose and intent statements to be bundled together. Section 3.420, the use table, directly after these proposed and intend, they propose and intent sections will provide a use table. The use table will consolidate the three lists from each industrial zone into one table. One change to that list is going to be to change a conditional use to permitted. 3.430 dimensional standards, consolidate dimensional standards from a list to a table format. And 3.4 or 3.430 additional standards, consolidate additional standards from each industrial zone into one list. Here is a excerpt from of the new use table. The new reference system we're proposing for the uses rather than three individual lists. The uses are listed in the far right or the far left column. The middle columns are for industrial park, then light industrial, then general industrial zone. Specific standards are referenced in the far right column. The key is P for permitted, C for conditional and N for not permitted. This allows staff and applicants to reference one table instead of three different lists to find whether specific uses are allowed in any industrial zone. We have done the same for dimensional standards, consolidating three different lists into one table. At the August 22nd meeting, the Planning Commission requested amendments to add, to be added to Chapter 6 of the Development Code to change the threshold that determines if variances, if variance is a type two or a type three review. Type two is done by staff and type three by Planning Commission. Currently, the code allows the expansion or reduction of a quantifiable provision in the code by more than 10%, but less than 30 via type two application. Per Planning Commission's recommendation, city staff has updated Section 6.1300 variances to lower the upper threshold for type two and type three variance applications from 30% to 15%. The purpose is to bring the city into conformance with cities of similar size. Just as a reminder, we did receive a comment from Metro. Metro provided a comment to ensure the proposed amendment would comply with Title IV of the Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. The request that retail commercial use in all areas own light industrial limit buildings to no more than 5,000 square feet of sales or service area. Areas within the regionally specific, specific industrial areas seen here in gray limit buildings to no more than 3,000 square feet of sales and service area. City staff added these additional standards to 3.440 point D point one and 3.440 point D point three. The use table for the light industrial and R S I A. This is a list of the proposed or the approval criteria. City staff and planning commission proposed that each of these criteria are met. The procedure will, we will be, or we've used to consider, this request is a type four land use application. At the public hearing on August 2nd, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the text minute to the city council. City council is the decision making entity and notices of the application were provided as required by code. City councils action, or the action city council is asked to make at this or at this ordinance adoption hearing is to consider Planning Commission's recommendation, which is approval of the ordinance and the adoption of draft and development, the adoption draft of the development code. At the, oh, sorry. The actions can, the city council can choose tonight are to confirm, amend or reverse Planning Commission's recommendation, enact or defeat all or part of the ordinance, remand or some or all of the proposals to planning commission. This conducts my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Take the screen back. Counsel Glance?
I have a question. I see Metro's a comment to us. And on the back page, it looks like it originally came from the DLCD. Is that the case? And if so, is that why Metro requested this? Have we satisfied both groups with the changes?
Yes, we have. So this was initially when we notified DLCD, they notified Metro. Metro responded to the notice with their comments. So we spoke with both Metro and DLCD and we have satisfied both entities.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, let's go ahead and open up public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing for this ordinance that was first introduced 9/12 of this year. An ordinance adopting text amendments to chapters three and six of the Troutdale Development Code. If anybody wishes to make public comment, now's the time. Go ahead and approach the table.
Well, we'll watch Troutdale. Couple weeks ago, I was away for your last meeting, but I did listen to the Zoom recording when I got back home. Well, two and a half hours worth. So my response today is actually in regard to a question and comment that I heard during that recording, actually. So we'll get right into it. At your last meeting on September 12th, Counselor Whitton asked Plan Commission Chair Staffenson, if you recalled why I, why I had voted against recommending this ordinance to council. His response, Chair Staffenson, his response was that I was opposed to automotive uses in light industrial. That wasn't entirely accurate. To provide some background, the list of activities that are being requested to be permitted outright in light industrial apply to every light industrial area in the city. Original impetus from the, came from the property owner of the I-84 Corporate Center off Marine Drive, where a small triangle of land is zoned, is zoned, light industrial, but is bordered by general industrial and Marine Drive. The preference at the time was to rezone that parcel to general industrial. Land Commission chose to not go that route. It was fine with allowing the additional uses in that small area, but not in the long sliver of light industrial that lies on the north side of historic Columbia River Highway, west of the junction. light industrial that lies on the north side of historic Columbia River Highway, west of the junction with Halsey. Those activities included repair and modification of vehicles, which I considered inappropriate with residential development immediately south across that road. Pair and modification in particular can include all manner of flammable or explosive materials. I also don't know what is meant by manufactured home services. This ordinance was also a bundle, much like what Portland voters received in their measure to reorganize their city government. I absolutely supported lowering the variance threshold to qualify for a top three hearing, but because two unrelated changes were included in the same ordinance, I was compelled to vote against recommending the package. One final comment. On page two of exhibit A, the table lists marijuana facilities as a conditional use under general commercial with an attached footnote as to distance from schools and parks. Ordinance number 882 obviously contradicts this, at least until the November 2024 election. That's it. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? I'm not gonna beg you. All right, anybody on Zoom? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing. So any other comments or discussion from council? Counselor Rittma?
I I did find the staff report a bit confusing, and normally I'm not, but is exhibit A what we're adopting? And exhibit C was was presented to the planning commission? I just they don't seem to be the same. So I'm just wondering what's going on.
I think he's talking about the
the staff report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the staff report of tonight's.
Yes, so what we are adopting is exhibit A. That is the clean code from from what it was previously. Now, in exhibit, I believe it was exhibit C, the planning commission staff report, that had both with the attachments had both a clean code and a red line code. So this code that we adopted today is a clean code, and the slight differences are what we have discussed in the staff report of the marijuana not being noticed correctly has been pulled separately and will be going to planning commission next month under a different code amendment case file number. That's why it's a little bit jumbled up. It's it is quite confusing, but there was a lot jumbled in there that we had to separate out to do the right noticing requirements.
So the exhibit C, for example, under marijuana facilities has N for industrial park, light industrial, general industrial, and the exhibit A has NCC for those three. Is that the difference you're talking about?
That will be so we went back to what it was because we did not notice DLCD with the proper amount of the proper 35 day noticing. So we had to go back to what the code currently says for marijuana facilities in order to notice DLCD properly of the code change under a different code amendment case file, which will be 7514, moving to planning commission on October 11. So that's why there's a discrepancy there.
I see. So the planning commission will have an opportunity to correct to N if they want to.
Exactly. Yes. So it will be moving forward under its own amendment, and then we'll be coming to council or depending on what planning commission.
Sure. All right. Thank you. That that clears up what I was wondering about.
I totally understand that.
Any other comments or questions from council? Counselor Glantz?
There's no risk in having some of this marijuana stuff continued to be passed. Correct?
No, the only portion that is continued quote unquote to be passed at this point because it's separate from this case file is a Scrivener's error that was put back in that was accidentally removed during the last code amendment, which is, I believe it's the thousand feet from a school or park. So that's the only thing that's changing is updating the the code to put that back that section back in under industrial and then moving forward with we'll be doing all of the marijuana section under its own code amendment.
The Scrivener's error was actually with respect to the general commercial, not not the industrial. It was it was in on the industrial, but somehow the footnote didn't get put in or the reference code didn't get put in in the table for the general commercial, and it has been put back in here. But it was a Scrivener's error at the time.
Satisfied? Counselor Glantz? If there's no other comments or questions, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move adoption of an ordinance adopting text amendments to chapters three and six of the Troutdale Development Code.
Seconded by Counselor White?
Counselor Glantz? Counselor Glantz?
Yes.
Counselor Rittma?
Yes.
See if she hears. Counselor Caswell? Counselor Caswell? Counselor one?
No.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Four, one, one, right? All right, I counted right. All right, thank you. Passes. Thank you, Dakota. Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate your work on this. All right, let's move on to agenda item number eight, staff communications. Mr. Ray Young.
For the first time in a long time, I have none, Mayor. You may move on to agenda item number nine.
All right. Counsel communications, Counselor Glantz?
I was fast. I don't have any this time. Thanks.
All right, Counselor Rittma?
I have been very burdened, shall we say, by having to attend urban flood safety and water quality district meetings, especially the last couple of weeks. And these are the meetings for the consolidation of the four separate levy districts that exist. Troutdale's is called the Sandy River Drainage Company. But there's three others that are mostly in Port, all in Portland, really, except a little bit in Gresham, and these districts are being set up, and they were authorized by the state in 2019 under an ordinance that they were going to be funded by user fees, service fees, some sort of fee structure where everybody would be paying the the same sort of rates based on criteria. This the the district is mostly dominated by Portland people. They it's an appointed board. I represent Troutdale. And I do have a few allies on this board, but they have decided to go forward and go to the legislature and have the operations of the district funded by property tax assessments, which I've objected to from the word go. And Tanny Stephenson has always been with me and and I have, you know, with the last vote we had on Thursday was 10 to six, so it's we're split. And the part of the district that the taxing assessments are under compression under the Oregon property tax rules, which are very complicated, and I'm not going to get into it right now, but causes the property owners in that area, which is everything basically west of us to pay, they will be paying less, and Troutdale tax taxing property owners who benefit from the district will be paying more toward the district. What's really unfair about this is the fact that our district, the Sandy River Drainage Company, has the best infrastructure and has less things to repair than the districts out west, particularly the ones in the sort of Vanport area, which are aged and and need a lot of work. Anyway, this is so grossly unfair that I have been fighting this. And I'm kind of exhausted, but I would like to give an update to the council. What? Anyway, today I had a meeting with all four districts. It took four hours. All four districts met. And it was agreed that they would at least look at a reasonable proposal prepared by Ed Trumkey. It was the thing I wanted done to try to fund the operations of this district by some sort of user fee. And but the the district is is controlled by, in my opinion, by the people who will pay less so that we end up paying more. I mean, it's just so unfair. So I anyway, today's meeting went well. They have agreed at least for the next six weeks or four weeks to study other ways of raising money for this district. So anyway, it's gonna be it's been a battle. I am frankly exhausted. Ed Trump, he's been a trooper. Tanny Stephenson's been an ally, and I do have other allies on this board who come from Portland, actually. They they see the unfairness of it. So anyway, this is just a taste, but Randy, staff, I guess I need if next the next council meeting isn't too full, I would like to report to council. We're not there yet. I'll give a more complete report, but I I the time has come that I need to report to council. I don't really need anything from council particularly, but I want to bring you up to speed. We're gonna have to go to the legislature early next year. I already talked to Zach Hudson, who's very up on this. And we may have to fight it there. But that is that is my public comment tonight. I request that we put something on the agenda for an upcoming meeting, either the next one or the one after that, so I can make a report, which I've been dread dreading doing because it's this thing is so complicated. And I've been on it for a year and a half now. But anyway, I I just wanted to give you a taste of what's coming.
Well, we appreciate it, Dave, and we appreciate that you're our representative on this because it's important. So
We're fighting the good fight. We really are. I guarantee.
I think we'll Ray and I are meeting on Friday, and so we will, whatever we need to do, we'll work it in. So
Thank you.
Yep.
Absolutely. Counselor Caswell, are you there?
Yeah, I am here.
All right. Do you have anything?
No, nothing for me.
Great. Counselor one? Follow that.
I can't follow that whatsoever. I just realized I didn't really say why I voted no. I don't really like. I think I think what Paul said it nicely, when you box up, we put all these things together, makes it complicates it for me. I think there's parts of it I was totally fine with, and there's something I wasn't really, I didn't really think was that big of a deal to make. Not make a big deal that minimizes importance, but I just felt like it wasn't a change that needed to be made considering everything that we did. So but I do want to say, in light of everything, I really respect staff's ability to make the right decision for our city, and I think that's why we hire quality people to help run our city like we had with our our presentation tonight, where we bring people in and people to make these decisions. So I guess I'm more on the side of trusting the people that we put in these positions to make the decisions, right decisions that need to be made, unless it goes way above and beyond. So other than that, I don't have anything else.
Counselor White?
Yeah, I appreciate Counselor Rittma's efforts and Tanny Stephenson as well. I think the biggest mistake we made years ago was we Troutdale joined a study group to study the levy situation, and it turned into the people with the needing the most work. I think lobbied at the legislation level to get a law passed that says now we have to do this. I hope you guys can stop it because that would be extremely unfair considering the compression. But another one that's I was gonna bring this up tonight before Dave spoke was if we had any kind of an update on the community enhancement situation. That's another one that's stuck in my craw is not being fair. And maybe we can get that at the next meeting to further update on the metro community enhancement fund. That's all I have.
Other than, yeah, we're having our second meeting tomorrow night with the Public Safety Working Group. I'm excited for the presentations, and I'm excited for the conversations that's gonna come from that. So I won't take up too much of everyone's time. That's all I got.
Is that it?
That's it.
I move adjourn.
Seconded by Counselor Glantz. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? Nay? All right, everybody. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.